Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 19, 2018. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
His call is...
Oh, nice.
Councilmember Gruscovia.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. All right, first item on our agenda then after that is to adopt this...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I would move to adopt the agenda with one addition to the consent agenda. So that would be, I think, item 6A-ish. Resolutions 18-76 for the declaring participation with the council on local results and innovation state performance measurement program.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adopt the agenda with the one change. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We have one proclamation this evening, and that is for the Minnesota Women of Today Founder's Day. So maybe you could come up front, and I'll meet you up front with a microphone. Did you know you were coming up front? Okay, good. Probably my phone, huh? Oh, back up here, it's your facing out. It seems like it makes sense that they can see you, but actually the camera's over here. Well, welcome, and we have a proclamation, but maybe you could introduce yourself first, and then I'll read the proclamation.
I'm Sherri Boyk, and I am currently the President of the Coon Rapids Women of Today.
I'm Cara Roberts, and I'm the Youth Lead Program Manager of Women of Today.
I'm Beth Clifford, and I'm the Secretary of Women of Today.
I'm Jenny Orr, and I'm the State Delegate.
Let me read the proclamation first. Whereas the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today have set aside July 1st to recognize the many community activities of dedicated Women of Today across the state, and whereas the Minnesota Women of Today is an organization of over 900 members in over 55 communities, and whereas the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today are dedicated to actively promoting such public awareness and service programs as Wishes and More, Breaking Free, True Friends, Camp Friendship, and the March of Dimes, as well as projects, educational programs, and fundraisers for the Coon Rapids area, and whereas the Minnesota Women of Today provide personal enrichment and leadership training for members of all ages, and whereas the Women of Today believe that through us great lessons can be learned, worthy deeds performed, and a hand of fellowship extended to millions of women everywhere, and now therefore I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim July 1st, 2018 to be Minnesota Women of Today Founder's Day in the City of Coon Rapids proclaimed this 19th day of June, 2018. You'll actually get one of these with the little sticker on it. I was, I feel like we missed something that didn't say that you won the chili cook-off there. It should've said that.
Yes, it should.
And, and it should've said that you represented Coon Rapids then in Fridley at the Leah Carlson fundraiser. Didn't win that one, but it was, but you were there, it was excellent chili, and I've found out that you still haven't been reimbursed for that. So we got to figure out how to get together on that somehow. Any upcoming events you'd like to highlight or feature?
Mercy Hospital Teddy Bear Drive.
All right, just go ahead, say what it is.
We have a Mercy Hospital Teddy Bear Drive for their pediatric unit.
Oh, well, that sounds cool. All right. And any big special plans for July 1st then?
Well, we usually have...
She has the microphone.
We usually have our members and families together and to celebrate all that we do. And so we're trying to learn more about what the City of Coon Rapids needs, and hopefully we can get out there and do some more activities.
Excellent. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 5, 2018 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move approval of the minutes from the June 5, 2018 meeting.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Any discussion or corrections?
Mayor.
Councilmember Gruscovia.
Just one thing in the other business, noted that I attended several Met Council Environmental Services meetings, I only attended the one on May 24th in Ananbeka. Not a glutton.
All right, any other...
You know, politicians are supposed to exaggerate, not minimize.
All right, any other corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we are on to the consent agenda, and the first item is to adopt Resolution 18-72, accepting the grant and amending the 2018 budget for recycling containers. Anoka County has offered to purchase containers and equipment to be used in the civic center. In addition, the county will grant up to $10,000 for additional recycling collection to be purchased by the city. As a condition of receiving the grant, the city will report volumes and weights of materials collected on a semi-annual basis, which staff is prepared to do, and this grant will allow the city to begin recycling compostable items such as food waste and paper towels in the kitchen as well as bathrooms. So we will be approving Resolution 18-72, accepting the grant in the amount of $10,000, and amending the 2018 general fund budget for the recycling containers. Next item is strictly an informational item, there's been a corporate officer change with Chipotle Mexican Grill, 3455 River Rapids Drive. So this is acknowledging that. Next item on our agenda is actually item five on this evening's agenda. Adopt Resolution 18-75, approving the donation of bikes to Bikes for Kids. The police department takes in hundreds of bicycles each year as found, property, or evidence. Some are in working condition, but many are missing parts, have small rust spots, or are damaged. Many of the bicycles are never claimed, and after being kept, the required amount of time are disposed of. Currently, we have an auction company for years to auction the bikes for a very nominal amount. In the past, the auction would take bicycles in all conditions, but recently decided to not take any bicycles with the slightest bit of rust or damage. Additionally, the auction company will not take children's bicycles, which make up at least half of those impounded. Therefore, many bikes get recycled. Staff proposes, so with this, we'll actually be authorizing, donating the bicycles to Bikes for Kids, which is a nonprofit unless an individual bike is determined to be worth auctioning. Bikes for Kids is a nonprofit organization that will take bicycles of all kinds in good working condition to refurbish and give away, or bicycles in less than pristine condition that could be used for parts. Bikes for Kids is headquartered out of Ham Lake and will work with the city to pick up the bikes. Item six, or the next item on the consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 18-74, accepting community partnership grant from CenterPoint Energy. The Community Partnership Grant Program offers an opportunity for CenterPoint Energy to invest in cities it serves. Since 2003, the program has awarded more than $1.5 million in donations and provided funding to support 848 projects in the CenterPoint Energy Service Area. This grant program helps cities leverage local funds to purchase needed safety equipment or support safety projects that are important to the community. The city has been awarded $2,000 to purchase hearing and eye protection and safety gloves. So with this, we'll be adopting Resolution Number 18-74, accepting the Community Partnership Grant from CenterPoint Energy. The seventh item on this evening's agenda, also on the consent agenda, is to consider Resolution Number 18-7... Wait a minute. Well, that's under bid openings, never mind. We're back to 6A. Thank you. All right, I didn't have that listed as consent. All right, so item 6A, which was the one that was added to the consent agenda and will wrap up the consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 18-76, declaring participation with the council on local results and innovation state performance measurement award. We've participated in this for a long time, right? And the city has developed the tools necessary to participate in the program for 2018. So with tonight's approval, the staff will submit data for the 2017 measures in the attached resolution to the Office of the State Auditor. The city will also report the data on the city website in order to comply with an additional program requirement. So this will be adoption of Resolution 18-76, declaring the city's participation with the council on local results and innovations performance measures program for 2018. And if, assuming that this gets approved, the city will receive approximately $8,600 in revenue from the state of Minnesota. Your Honor. Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including item 6A.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
About the bikes one, so if somebody sees a bike that's fairly obviously abandoned, like, say, in a creek, who should they call? Or do you use report it? What's the best way to let the city know that they should come get it?
Councilmember Demmer, Mayor, yeah, when you find a bike that looks abandoned, and it's obvious when you see one that's in a peculiar place that's been left for a period of time, in Minnesota or in Coon Rapids, call 911 and say that you found an abandoned bike, and a community service officer, or if one's not on, an officer will come pick it up, and we try to then match the bike to any stolen bikes, and that's where we do. We work hard to return it back to the owners if we're able to.
Okay, so you really do call 911, and you don't have to feel guilty about that?
Yes, that's exactly right. In Coon Rapids and Anoka County, 911 is always the right number to call if you want a response from an Anoka County law enforcement person.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion or questions from the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second to adopt it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Now, on to item seven, to consider Resolution Number 18-79, awarding a contract for E grit Boulevard water main replacement. We got a bunch of base bids and alternatives and choices, and Mr. Hanson, anything you want to just kind of hit on the highlights of that? Because it sounds like we're going to take alternative two, was that it?
That's correct. That's the horizontal directional drill replacement option. So in 2012, we reconstructed E grit Boulevard, and water main breaks are a little bit like lightning strikes. They're hard to predict, and we had a good half dozen in a very localized area from the Coon Rapids Boulevard Service Road to about Drake Street. So we thought it was just best to replace the water main, and we bid two different options, pipe bursting, that's a method of pipe rehabilitation where you basically use the existing water main as a host pipe, and then you pull in the new pipe right into it. And directional drilling is kind of a similar method, you're just sort of drilling next to where the existing was, and then we'll abandon that. So the idea is to keep the reconstructed road in as good condition as we can, and then restore the areas that we have to patch and where we have to cut in for hydrants and for service connections.
All right, and based on the bid prices received, we're looking at awarding a contract to include alternate number two. The low bidder, Dave Perkins Contracting, has successfully completed many projects in the city, and staff believes the project costs came in higher than the engineer's estimate due to the urgency of the replacement work and the timing of the bid, however, still recommends moving forward with the project. Once the contract has been awarded, the work will be scheduled to begin as quickly as possible. All of the pipe replacement and restoration work is expected to be complete by August 3rd, 2018. All right. Will this require any meetings with the neighbors? If we're digging out hydrants, will be impacting irrigation systems, or curbs, or anything?
We'll talk to those individual homeowners. There's only about six that are going to be directly affected, so we'll reach out to them on a case-by-case basis, and we'll talk directly about what things we're going to need to do to restore their yard, and they're going to have to be on temporary water for a period of time, so we'll need to communicate with them about that. We do plan to send an area-wide letter to all the residents nearby that use E grit frequently, just explaining the project and who to contact if there's any questions or concerns.
And will there be a complete closure on E grit?
No, no, it'll be open to traffic, but we'll have to put up some temporary no parking signs, in particular, north of 99th, where people tend to park that use the Anoka County Park.
All right. Councilmember Geisler?
Will you be adding this to, like, the weekly construction update kinds of things?
Absolutely.
And so people can go to the website and look at the construction updates?
Yep, and we've got that information in the letter. We've contained all the information that people would need to know to sign up for those updates, so absolutely, we'll have that as part of our regular weekly updates.
Thank you.
We haven't had a motion on this yet.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. And I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-79, awarding a contract to Dave Perkins Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $509,675.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion? Mayor. Councilmember Gruscovia.
Question for Mr. Hanson, is, what is the size of the existing water main there right now? Is it 10-inch?
It's 10-inch cast iron pipe, yep.
And is a directional boring 10-inch main considered a long-term solution?
Yeah, in fact, it's a continuous fused pipe that's made of high-density polyethylene, so in theory, it'll probably last forever.
Good answer.
He said in theory.
I would like to see that.
With water mains, your biggest probability of failure is at the joints, and this really minimizes where you have those joints. So it's a good application, it's a good product. The inside diameter is a little bit less than 10 inches, but the fact that there's no bell and spigot ends more than makes up the efficiency of the pipe inside, more than makes up for the loss and a little bit of capacity there. But it's a long-term fix, by all means.
I was just concerned that we missed, maybe missed the mark in 2012 when we had the street dug up, but it sounds like this is just going to be a better even, better solution.
Technically, we did miss the mark in 2012, but we're fixing it.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, so just to refer back, so any of our construction projects, people can go to our website or sign up for weekly emails to say, here's what's happening with this construction project, here's what's going on. So I just kind of wanted to reiterate that with this, that it's a big project that's going to go on in a neighborhood. If you want to know, there's a very easy way to be informed all the time and what's happening. Check out the website.
Excellent. Mayor.
That brings up one other point. There is no assessment to that, those homeowners for this new work, is there?
No, none. Historically, we don't assess for water main repairs, those are based on, or funded by enterprise funds, the Water Fund.
Got it, okay. All right. Councilmember Demmer?
I can't remember if we talked about this last time, but just the fact that there were a high number of water main breaks that required extensive emergency repair, is that, is that anything you'd like to address for the people at home? Should they be worried that theirs is about to break if they're in that area, or have we figured out a root cause?
You know, it's just like, water main breaks are, like I said, they're like lightning strikes. It's hard to predict exactly where they can occur. We do know that it seems that we have a higher number as we get closer to the river. I think that has something to do with the fact that we had a lot of cast iron, or have a lot of cast iron pipe. As Councilmember Geisler and Mayor Cook recall from Mississippi Boulevard, I think we had somewhere almost around two dozen before we replaced that entire segment of water main. So big boulders and cobbles and such in the ground as you get closer to the river, a lot of freeze thaw, movement in the ground seems to be where these things occur. But in the side streets, we have a lot more ductile iron pipe, which seems to be more resilient to that area. So we've had a few breaks on 97th Avenue, which is nearby, so we'll probably be planning for some type of replacement there, possibly next year.
And with that knowledge, then, when we do road repair, that meets those conditions, so the cast iron, if it's closer to the river, that's a factor?
That's always considered, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight on this evening's agenda is to consider adoption of Ordinance 2207, amending Chapter 5-1500 to add mobile food units, or food trucks, to the transient and itinerant merchant code. So this will be, Ordinance 2207 amends the city's code to specifically allow and regulate food trucks. These changes will streamline the process for food truck vendors while ensuring regulation of the use. Any more presentations, or are we all good? Anybody got any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take this one.
Absolutely.
I know that, at least I received a letter from someone about this, and I think that there's maybe a little bit of language about how itinerant merchants and where food trucks kind of comes into it that some people took a little offense to. I'm not overly concerned about that one line. Overall, the getting a food truck ordinance and having it in there, spelling it out, streamlining the process, you know, aligning the structure and the fees with what's happening in the county, I think is absolutely the right thing to do. It gets us moving forward and puts us in a better position to allow food trucks to operate in the city and know what the rules are. Does it mean that it's perfect? Maybe not. Will we learn? Because this is new, so I'm not saying that this is the only time we will ever look at this. But with that, I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2207, amending the city's transient and itinerant merchant code to include mobile food truck units.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, so I also got that email, and, you know, as I was reading through it again, having read that email, the part about, you know, vendors, peddlers, door-to-door type, you know, situations, that opening sentence, you know, says they're going to come to your house and knock on your door, which is kind of invasive to people, and so we license them for that reason. So, you know, if there's a way to clean up that language, to not say, "Mobile food units will come to your door and intrude on your property," might make that a little easier. Because I think that when it's without that section, you can tell what they mean, is the traveling door-to-door is going to annoy people. With mobile food units in there, it makes it sound like we're saying, "Anyone selling stuff in the city that's not a brick and mortar is intruding on privacy," and that's kind of hard. I can see how people would prefer not to have that language, so it then ends up looking like commentary rather than, you know. So I don't know if there's a way to clean that up, it doesn't have any effect on the rest of the ordinance, it just streamlines the purpose a little, or if anyone cares, but I, it does look a little weird to talk about mobile food units going door-to-door.
Statistically, how many people do you think will actually read that?
Only the mobile food trucks.
I'm just, I'm...
I know. I just thought this is our chance, if we, you know, if we just moved that thing down a little ways, or something like that, then it's more correct. So we're not going to come back with a new motion to correct it, so I figured this is our window.
To Councilmember Geisler's point, you know what? This has been out here for quite a while, we've done as much tweaking as we can to make it, hopefully, a good ordinance, but if we need to come back and tweak it, adjust it, change things, we're going to do that. You know, we're not, we don't think that we've got the be-all, end-all here. You know, it's good right now, and if we knew a way to make it better right now, we would do that, but unfortunately, we're probably not going to know until we see how it rolls out, so.
And Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Demmer's point, I read that sentence again, and I kind of went, oh, yeah, it does kind of sound weird.
Because of the door-to-door.
Because of the door-to-door.
Can I propose a suggestion?
Yeah.
Just, and I don't think it substantively changes it, so I'm wondering whether council would be open to it, but simply saying, "We're traveling place to place." Because we're not, nobody is thinking that food trucks are going door-to-door unless they're selling ice cream, and they're excluded, so.
Mayor. Councilmember Gruscovia?
I think to that point, I like the fact that we're not creating a whole bunch more ordinance here, we're actually just amending an ordinance, and we're fixing this. I think that we've been a little bit late to get on this food truck thing, and that amending what we have, although some of the verbiage isn't perfect, the intent and the ordinance behind it, I think, is the right way to go.
I agree.
I'm just thinking that if we change the wording now, we won't be able to vote on this tonight. Would that be correct?
I think that was the question, substance.
Yeah.
Couple of points that I would make. It says whether from a fixed location, which I assume is what is meant by food trucks, or fireworks sales, other things that we license there, and the door-to-door piece being more of the solicitors going door-to-door. So in my mind, it meets the spirit, whether that is offensive, or I don't think offensive is quite the way, or whether food truck individuals don't like that. Certainly, the change that Councilmember Johnson proposes, if the council is wanting to do that, rather than just leaving it as it is, would not be a significant enough change that would require a reintroduction to the ordinance.
And just to clarify, sorry.
I'm sorry, and really, the intent was, the door-to-door was a concern, people coming to your door.
I'm, I think that the, yeah, I'm totally fine with the way it is, I thought I'd bring it up. To me, the point of it is public health, right? If you undercook the food, there's a public health problem, just like there would be for anything else. And so people have to be a little selective when they read that, but you're right, fixed location, or, anyway. I can see how people would say, wait, 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 you're saying we're going to be deleterious to public welfare? That seems a little mean, but on the other hand, you can certainly cause salmonella, so. If that's the biggest hang-up in the whole ordinance, I think we're fine.
And the word "may" is in there. Only "may" intrude, and not "will."
We're doing licensing so that you don't. Yeah, okay. Had to get it out there since it came in via email.
All right. So we're not going to look at the change. You okay? Everybody good? All right, we have a motion, a second, right? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
One other thing, Your Honor? Just a note.
Are we going to go back and reorder?
Nope.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
There was one other request that we come back and review it periodically, and I think that's absolutely the right thing to do when we pass a new ordinance, is check on it in six months and just make sure it's running, and so wanted to get that into the minutes as well, that, yeah, sure, new stuff, we'll look at.
And I'm sure when the handouts are done for food trucks, it's probably not going to say you're deleterious to the... All right. Number nine, now that we've done that, now we have to establish some license fees for those food truck units, so we're looking at establishing licensing fees for mobile food And this was introduced last council meeting, so we're just looking at adopting it.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Move adoption of Ordinance 2208, establishing license fees... Move adoption of ordinance 2208 establishing license fees for mobile food units.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Wells, discussion. Let's just remind everybody, so it's a $15 per day license, $40 per week, $100 per year for a 21 days or fewer license, or $300 per year for a more than 21 days license, which coincides with full food trailer license through Anoka County. Any discussion?
Just a question?
Councilmember Johnson?
Section three says, "Effective date of ordinance, this ordinance shall be effective for all annual licenses issued for 2018 and succeeding years." Does that mean all licenses, including the day, week, and other licenses?
Everybody's looking at Ms. Lenzmeyer.
So, this ordinance shall be effective for all...
Licenses.
Mobile food unit licenses for 2018 and succeeding years.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson?
The 15 and the 40 are effective now for daily and weekly, so that's why we use the
word "annual."
I see, so we're adding the new annual ones? Okay, I understand, thank you, that clarifies it.
Okay, any other discussion? The motion and the second, may? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. All right, item 10 is to consider planning case 18 dash 6, consider adoption of ordinance 2209 modifying requirement for attaching accessory structures to adjacent other structures. And current code requires that an accessory structure larger than 120 square feet of floor area, so located such that any of its walls is within five feet of a wall of any other structure, must be attached to and made structurally part of the other structure. At the time this was implemented, it was consistent with the building code, since then, the building code has been updated, and the requirement of combining accessory structures with adjacent structures is no longer in effect. The prior building code did not include standards for opening stores and windows in a residential setting, and the technology has advanced, and the new code now has residential standards for openings, therefore, the proximity requirement is no longer necessary. We're also looking at, there's also a housekeeping change, the clause calling for concrete slabs for accessory structures 120 square feet or larger, this will be changed to apply to accessory structures larger than 200 square feet. This change is dated, so the section 11 dash 1207 dot two sub-six, sub-F, is consistent with current language in that other section. The council introduced the proposed amendment at the June 5 meeting, and I didn't hear anything from anyone, so what do you want to do? Your Honor, Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that in planning case 18 dash 6, that the council move to approve ordinance 2209 regarding accessory structures.
Second. Motion by Kicker, second by Gruskowiac, discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
So, two questions. One thing I couldn't quite tell is if someone, say, does one that's 140 square feet, and they put a concrete slab under it, if that needs an inspection? So, I know they need one if it's over 200.
So, if they decide to build one that's overbuilt, you know?
Less than 200, but with a concrete slab?
Yep.
Does that trigger something?
Yeah, because I don't think anyone's ever going to build a 50-square-foot one with a concrete slab, but, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmembers, I can't... So, we only require permits on sheds 200 square feet or larger, so we would not, that requirement would not trigger a building permit.
So, you can put the slab down and build it?
If you want.
So, then the other question I have, because I have neighbors in this exact scenario, they pulled the permit, they're in the middle of building the shed, now what happens? So, it's 140 square feet, it's not 200, so now it doesn't need the permit anymore, but they've already pulled it.
Yeah, that's probably a situation where we could talk to them about, you know, addressing it in terms of a refund, if that's appropriate.
Or just not having the final inspection, or...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's something I guess I would just call the building permit desk and talk to the staff there.
So, then, does this become effective immediately at the end of this meeting, or is there a...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, 15 days after publication, and we will publish it on Friday, so July 7th, April 9th.
So, if the final inspection is in August, then they don't have to have it, but if it's in July, then they do. Okay, perfect.
They might want to take a break on it.
Yeah, I mean, they're right in that, and I don't know how many other people are in the middle of building a shed, but I figured, you know, there's permits out there, so.
Technically, he couldn't even have started on it, though, without the permit, so I think it was necessary.
Right, right.
Pull the permit.
Just wasn't sure what he should do now, so, okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider accepting the 2017 annual financial statement. We held a work session this evening to review the 2017 annual financial statement with the city's external auditors, Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, Radosevich, and company, P.A., M.M.K.R., certified public accountants. Once approved, an electronic copy of this statement will be made available at the city's website, and this is, the budget is important, and then this is the one that shows, this is what we did, this is how we performed with the budget, and this is really where the city is at, right? Okay. Anybody have any questions, want to make a motion, want to talk about it? What do you want to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to accept the 2017 annual financial statement for the city.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker, discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Just wanted to point out that the auditors found a clean report, and that the City of Coon Rapids has received the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada Award for Distinguished Budget Presentation for the 32nd year in a row, so, thank you again.
Which is, they said, the highest thing they can, highest rating they can give for this, right?
Yep, so, that's really good news, means our books are open and our books are clean.
Right. Beautiful thing. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. This will be uploaded, and you will be able to find that on the city's website if you would like to review all of that. Item 12 is to consider home improvement loan program servicing contract with Community Reinvestment Fund, C.R.F. Mr. Fernealius, you want to hit the highlights of this, or should I just read your...
So, Community Reinvestment Fund is a nonprofit group based in Minneapolis that has been servicing our home improvement loans through the Coon Rapids Housing Improvement Program since 2005. That contract needs to be updated, there are a number of fees that they want to adjust. They provide a number of different services, and the city just doesn't have the capacity to service the loans that we make, so that's why we bring in C.R.F. So, there's a proposed amendment that would involve increasing or changing some of the fees. A $2 a month servicing fee would be added for some of our deferred loans, also some setup fees for some of the amortizing loans that we have, as well as some other fees related to servicing of the program. So, this is a fairly, I think, important piece of the program that we have. I think there was a slight change to the language in the agreement. I know that the city attorney was involved in conversations with C.R.F.'s attorney this afternoon, I think that's been cleared up, and I believe there's a version of the agreement that will be signed that has the correct language in it, and I don't know if Mr. Brody wants to summarize that change or not. I guess if there's questions, we can certainly address those.
Mr. Brody? There was just a couple of, I guess, for lack of better words, some of the fine print that we changed this afternoon, it doesn't really change the substance of the agreement, nothing in terms of pricing or what's in the memo, and so we just needed to, just, it actually benefited the city in the end, the terms that were changed, so that's, you've got the final version in your packet for signature.
All right. Is there anything to approve and execute for this?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to approve and execute the loan servicing agreement with the Community Reinvestment Fund, Inc., to provide loan servicing for loans originated through the Coon Rapids Housing Improvement Program.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson, discussion? Mayor? Councilmember Gruskowiac?
In looking over these changes, they look like pretty modest changes over the most part, and hasn't been changed since 2005, so I think it's all entirely acceptable.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. 13 this evening is to consider appointment of election judges, approve salaries, and set canvas date for primary election. So, Minnesota statute requires that election judges be appointed by the city council at least 25 days prior to the election. Attached, we have a list here of election judges by precinct, and staff is requesting that council authorize the city clerk to make appointments and substitutions as deemed necessary during the 25 days prior to the election. Election law allows for emergency appointments on election day should the need arise. Staff is proposing that the election judge hourly salary be increased to $11 per hour, with the assistant head judge at $13 per hour, and the head judge at $15 per hour. Student trainees, if any, would be paid $11 per hour. State law requires that the city council meet to canvass the returns and declare the results on the second or third day after the primary election, and staff suggests that council set a special meeting to canvass the election results for Friday, August 17th, 2018, at 7:30 a.m. This meeting should be brief, and at least four council members must attend. So, Ms. Lenzmeyer, so I was just kind of curious, so we're, the folks that are working there that aren't, that don't have an official, all right, $11 per hour and $11 per hour for the student trainees, was, shouldn't there be any kind of disparity at all if they're like, as a trainee? Just curious. I'm not going to wrinkle things up over it, I just thought that was kind of weird.
Mr. Mayor, that's just consistent with what we've done, we've paid the election judges and the student judges the same.
Okay, all right.
Are the trainees serving in the capacity of an election judge there, they just have mentors and people side by side with them?
That is correct.
So, they're performing the same job?
They are.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So, in looking through the judge list, it looked like there are some precincts that are a little light, are you still looking for election judges?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, yes, I have several precincts, if you notice, were light, and so letters are going out, reminder calls, I've got several people who haven't yet responded, so anybody who's interested...
And anyone who's watching, I will attest, I spent 16, 17 years as an election judge and a head judge, and it's a very interesting way to learn about the process. You learn how the votes are calculated, how and why, and when you go in, and somebody checks your name, and then you get a slip, and why you get that slip, and all of the little rules, and how everything works to ensure that we have a free and fair election. So, participation as an election judge is a fabulous way to get engaged and learn a little bit about it, so, give the city a call if you're interested.
Thank you.
My commercial.
And you don't have to be from that precinct or ward to serve as an election judge there, so, you know, if you want to, there's space around the city.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of election judges as outlined in our attached list, to authorize the city clerk to appoint and assign election judges during the 25 days preceding the election, and if substitutions are necessary, to approve the hourly salaries, as we've previously discussed, and to schedule the canvas meeting, the special meeting for canvassing, on Friday, August 17th, at 7:30 a.m. at City Hall.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Wells, discussion?
Mayor, if I may, just ask a question. Minnesota statute 204B sub-21 requires these election judges be appointed by the city council. Is there anything in there that requires us to set a minimum or a maximum hourly salary? Is there any recommendations in that statute?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gruskowiac, I don't believe it would be in that statute, it would be part of minimum wage requirements, we ought to make sure we're at least meeting that, and then based on what we require them to do, make it fair.
All right, I mean, it's fair and everything, I just wanted to make sure that we are, you know, well within what the statute would outline. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider youth-first community of promis...promises. Consider youth-first community of promise and teen programming. Youth-first community of promise has a mission to actively engage youth, their families, and the community to ensure youth have the five fundamental promises they need to succeed, caring adults safe places, a healthy start, effective education, and opportunities to give back. The summer, Coon Rapids youth were able to participate in summer programs beginning June of 2017. A bus was provided at Coon Rapids Middle School on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for transport to and from the youth-first facility in Highway 10 and Ramsey, and the school agreed to promote the program and allow city staff to visit each classroom the first week of summer school to meet the students. Summer program ran from June 12th through August 30th, 2017, and will again be available during this summer. During the school year, an after-school program was provided at Coon Rapids High School and the middle school, beginning in September of 2017. The program was conducted at each location two afternoons per week, and a youth-first staff member provided in-class support during the regular school day at these locations. The city committed $10,000 for this programming in 2017, and $20,000 in 2018. The funds to cover these costs were offset by discontinuing the city's teen program, teen programming at the Riverwind Teen Center. It was anticipated at the time the memorandum of understanding was approved, that it would lead to Coon Rapids' consideration for joining the advisory joint powers of N.W.A.C.C. Signing the JPA will ensure that youth-first programs will continue to be offered for Coon Rapids youth during both the school year and summer after 2018. As an official partner, Coon Rapids will also have two board seats that can be filled by city employees, officials, or community members that are appointed by the city council. These positions will have voting power and will be asked to participate on one of our board committees. The N.W.A.C.C., what the heck is that? Northwestern Anoka County Community Consortium, there we go, has now modified the joint powers agreement to allow for the city's participation, and would like the city council to consider adoption, and is attached for council's consideration. If the joint powers agreement is approved, the council should also designate two board members and one alternate member. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Stenwaddle or anyone?
No, Mayor and council, I think that covers it. The Director, Mayna Sapp, did have a work session with council recently and provided some statistics on participation for the past year, and I think it was a really successful program, the number of participants increased significantly over those that we had at the Riverwind Center, and so I think from that perspective, it was successful, and becoming a part of this joint powers will allow us to help steer that ship moving forward.
Mayor? Councilmember Gruskowiac?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into a joint powers agreement with the Northwestern Anoka County Community Consortium.
Second. Motion by Gruskowiac, so we'll apparently take these separately then, is that okay?
If you must, in case it doesn't pass.
All right. Motion by Gruskowiac and a second by Johnson to enter into the joint powers agreement. Any discussion? Your Honor? Councilmember Wells?
Just like to say that this is the definition of good bang for your buck, this is an excellent organization, and what we're getting for $20,000 is outstanding.
It was incredible, and the numbers they gave us on the participation, just, it was phenomenal, it was exponentially greater than anything we had from the previous attempt. All right, any other discussion? All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. And then, we have another one, designate two voting board members and an alternate. We figured that one out. Councilmember Demmer.
So, do we make the motion first and then say who it is?
Just move the nominee to whoever.
Mr. Stenwiddell? Make a motion to nominate the voting members and the two alternates that were discussed.
So, we had, yeah, so who is the list of two and one? Because I thought we had two and two.
Yes, we do, yeah. Mayor and Council, the names that were discussed in work session just a little while ago were Councilmember Geisler and Councilmember Kicker as voting members, and then actually assigning two alternates, Ryan Gunderson as staff, our recreation coordinator, and Councilmember Johnson as another alternate.
So, that was where I had a question, because I came back and looked at the JPA, and it actually specifically says two directors and one alternate. There is no voting proxy. All votes must be cast in person by the two directors or alternate. So, are we allowed to do two alternates?
Why that?
Okay. Just making sure.
Mayor? Councilmember Grischowiak?
Would it make more sense to appoint Ryan Gunderson and either Bill Kicker or Jenny as the members, with alternates being two others? Because city staff, Ryan Gunderson, he would be almost assured to make those meetings every time and have voting privileges.
Well, my understanding is that the plan is for him to be at the meeting all the time anyway, but that our elected officials would have the voting privileges.
Due to the accountability.
Okay.
Due to the accountability of like what he said.
Okay. I guess that makes sense. Okay.
All the more incentive for us to make them two.
Yes.
All right. So, did that come out as a motion?
I'm going to move that.
Who's late?
All right, so, I think what I heard, and I'm open to friendly amendments, is that I will move to designate Councilmember Kicker and Councilmember Geisler as the two voting board members, and Councilmember Johnson and city staff Gunderson as the alternate member to the NWACC.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grischowiak. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Nicely done. Thanks for giving us that.
Nail it.
All right. Next on our agenda is open mic. Anybody here to speak at open mic? Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, I, uh--
Oh, hang on, hang on. Here's what we need you to do. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council, and then all remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open mic is not a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting, where they copy forward to the speaker. You have a podium?
All right.
All right.
It's the really long way of saying come on up to the podium.
There we go.
Yeah. All right. Mine is just a general question.
Do you have to name and address, or I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thomas Wagner, 11126 Drake Street, Creek Meadows Townhome Complex. Kind of speaking in behalf on some of our neighbors. We have just, it's just a general question on certification of renters, that they have to be certified through the city, that a renter, that someone who rents, wants to rent out property, needs to be certified through the city of Coon Rapids?
They have to have a rental license.
Right. They had to have a rental license. Is there any kind of rules, a list of rules, regulations that they need to follow, a listing of rules that can be acquired? I tried looking for it online. I couldn't find it. And I was wondering if there's a listing of that, because we are in question of some of our renters not following what we feel might be the rules of renting. We might feel there's some illegal action going on, and in question of that, we'd like clarification of maybe rules or rents of the renter.
Sure. So, as long as we've got your name and name and address, we can send you the rules. We can also send you the contact. Would that, who's our, the cops officer, or would it be now then?
Well, if Mayor and Council, certainly, you speak with someone in our community development department, that'd probably be the best first contact. So, Kristin DeGrand in this case would be able to assist him with some of that information. There is some of the information as well online. It might more pertain to the property owner and what would allow them to rent. It sounds like part of your question may be what a renter themselves can or cannot do while they're renting at the property, but that's something we can help clarify with you.
I think I found a little bit of information regarding what renters' rights are and owners' rights are, but, you know, which can be acquired through like the human services departments. But as far as if someone that becomes certified to rent in Coon Rapids, I thought there must be some kind of a list or guide that they must have to follow for that, and we're in question of that and would like clarification of that.
So, I would reach out to Kristin DeGrand on city staff here, and she would be able to field whatever questions you had. And yes, they have to, they have to take a six-hour multi-housing crime-free program in order to become a landlord, and certainly they, I would certainly think part of the obligation would be to follow the rules of the association.
Right. That's what I kind of thought. There must be some kind of a class they take, and in that class they go over their rules. So, that's what I was kind of curious of. Something could be sent to myself or whoever.
Mr. Mayor, so I just have a question of clarification. So, we do rules for the people who are doing the renting, but we don't have rules that I'm aware of that say, if you want to rent in our city, you have to pass some sort of a process.
That's, that's right. And if there's a concern about criminal activity, then I would encourage you to reach out to the police department.
Well, we're not sure.
You said illegal activities.
It's that they're not renting according to the guidelines and rules of what they should be to be certified renters. That's kind of what we're in question of. As far as actually legal activity, you know, we're just wondering about, we think they're doing something kind of wrong, you know, wrong, that they're basically in a sense allowing renters in that, without being checked and things like that, just for example.
You will find the staff very accommodating and very informative, and I'm sure Kristin DeGrand would be all the help you will need.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here to address council for open mic? Seeing none, we will close the open mic portion, and we had one report from an open mic response from last time, and that was several residents from above Hanson and Grau Street. The residents requested access to Grau Street from Hanson Boulevard to be permanently closed as part of the county's proposed project, and they further expressed frustration about general speeding within the neighborhood and identified potential safety concerns with regard to visibility and geometrics of the roadway near the 122nd and Grau's intersection. The 2019 county project to upgrade Hanson Boulevard includes a four-lane divided roadway with protected turn lanes at select intersections. This project is being done to improve safety and reduce crashes within the corridor by implementing access management strategies, and city staff believes the proposed changes will create a safer roadway for vehicle and pedestrian traffic. The current lack of medians and turn lanes for traffic turning from Hanson Boulevard onto the side streets creates an unsafe condition. There will be several changes made to alleviate those issues. The 122nd Street, Grau Street intersection in particular, will be changed from full access to three-quarter access. The addition of medians, shoulders, and protected turn lanes for north and southbound traffic will allow vehicles to utilize a safe environment to make those turn movements. This improvement will alleviate the desire for vehicles to move through the intersection at a higher rate of speed onto the side street and reduce backups and/or rear-end collisions for those turning vehicles. The city has been participating in the design process since the project has begun and supports the proposed changes, and it is not recommended to close 122nd Avenue at Hanson as part of the county roadway project in 2019. In response to the safety concerns received to date by residents along Grau Street, city staff, city staff has reviewed the installation of median signage and traffic markings, and will also review vision obstructions around the intersection for potential tree and vegetation trimming to improve sightlines, and traffic and speed count data collection will occur within the neighborhood. Following site reconnaissance and review of the data collected, the engineering department will provide recommendation on potential corrective actions. That's a long response, but thorough. So, that was the only thing we had there for, did you have something?
Just wanted to point out that there's also an attached layout picture to the response. So, if people want to look up what the new proposal looks like, it's attached.
All right. We are to other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will do our fun calendar events. So, Thursday, so just two more days, we've got the summer concert series. It's The Authorities are playing at the dam. And then, next week, Tuesday, so a week from tonight, we have our second Summer in the City Neighborhood meeting, and that's at Burl Oaks Park, and that's over on 120th Lane.
It's between Dogwood and Evergreen Circles. It looks like you can't drive in there. Looks like you've got a cul-de-sac and then a sidewalk across the top. Maybe you can walk in from the street below? Is that what it says?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and with those, we have the police department, Public Works, the fire department, water, ice cream, and you get to meet city staff and ask any questions about each of the different departments of the city. So, come on out to that one. That's great. And then I'll kick off the conversation. I know we're going to want to talk a lot about how fabulous it was last week, Tuesday, at the Summer in the City meeting at Boulevard Plaza, if I got the name right, with the opening of the splash pad. And I drive by it every day, and it's just been busy, 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 busy. So, fabulous event.
The kickoff was incredible. I mean, it was 500 pieces of ice cream went, they were gone within 10 minutes of the ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
It was the only complaint I heard that night, really, was not enough ice cream. Fabulous event. I just, oh, it was just so much fun. All the kids, all the people at the picnic tables and the benches and the playgrounds were going, and it was awesome.
Can I dovetail off of that?
Absolutely.
So, I, the day we had that, I sent out a little Facebook kind of thing, saying I was excited to see how many people showed up. And I wanted staff to hear this, because here are the responses that I got back. Wow, that looks awesome. The art installations are great, and that's beautiful. And some of those came from other parts of the country. So, I really want to commend the staff on doing a nice job. I too think it looks great, and I was super excited by how people received it and how people are using it.
And it was so exciting that after the countdown, the water came on. It was just that, that moment of hesitation. It was like, come on.
And it wasn't green.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I think I was, so, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, the next day that there was people from the ice arena that would go out and do counts to check to see, and I think around 10:11, they did a check, and the next day, there was 150 people. And they did checks around 6 o'clock. There were 150 people. So, it's just--
The demand is there.
Been used and phenomenal. And now, we have food truck ordinance. If we have food trucks that want to give us a call and park by the splash pad, that might not be a bad idea.
Of course, it might cut into the concession sales in the ice center, but--
Let them sort out whether that's a restaurant or not.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So, right in the middle of an event, it will be our next council meeting. So, I think that's too late to talk about the Fourth of July event. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
So, that kicks off on July 2nd, correct?
Parade, yep.
With the--
That evening.
All right. So, somebody have that calendar that wants to talk about what's coming up? It's a huge celebration. All right. Chief Piper, you got something for us?
Mayor and councilmembers, I've heard that this, I know a couple things about it. Yes, it starts on July 2nd, starting at noon pretty much all three days, and there'll be rides, of course, bingo, pull tabs. The parade is that on Monday night, the 2nd. Then, on the 3rd, start up again at noon with things I mentioned, and then the car show is that night. And then, on the 4th, of course, the big day, the 5K, 10K is in the morning. For all the people who want to run, they can sign up online or the day out. And then, as the day goes on, hopefully, the weather will be beautiful, and then, of course, the big fireworks display is at 10 o'clock. And for anybody who hasn't been there, it's at the Coon Rapids Ice Center, which is on Crooked Lake and Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Parking at the community college and parking all around.
Right. And also, for all the details, it's on the city website also.
All right. Is that enough?
That's enough. I guess the only thing I would add is how many people do so much work to pull this off. You know, we have meetings and, you know, in addition to all the city staffs and local groups, I mean, Anoka Ramsey, Anoka County, Alina Health, there's a lot of people that make this work.
Yeah. This, this doesn't just happen.
Exactly.
All right. Other business to come before council? Oh, yes. Safety camp. Registration for safety camp is open until July 10th. It's coming up for kids that were in 4th and 5th grade this past year, is that right?
Going into 4th and 5th.
Going into 4th and 5th grade. I'm going to try and get that right. Okay. So, if you have kids going into 4th and 5th grade, especially if you are not familiar with safety camp, it is an incredible program that teaches those kids so many different kinds of safety, from bike safety to around electricity. Gets them, you know, it builds these relationships with our firefighters and our law enforcement, and it's just, it's a great, great program. I've never heard a bad thing about it, and it's just, yeah, it's awesome. Okay, and that will be coming up on July 18th, registration, city website through July 10th.
17th and 18th.
17th and 18th.
18th.
Got it. Flashing game sight. All right. Any other business to come before council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.